Welcome, Julia. We have a new board member. She's the township board liaison with the planning. If you look over the agenda. Pretty basic, but I'll entertain a motion to approve. I'll motion to approve the agenda. Your support? Then moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Our last meeting was August twenty-second. If you look at the minutes.
I'll make a motion with seven minutes.
I'll second it.
Then moved and seconded to approve last meeting's minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Next up, we'll open it up to public comment. Please state your name and where you're from in two minutes. Open it up to anybody at this time.
I guess I'm here. Did I just stand up right?
Yep.
Okay, I'm Chad Becker from Tiger Solar. I know there's a lot of local politics going on. I'm actually from Grand Rapids or really Standale. But I'm a contractor for solar and I think I've been. Some of what I'm doing is I guess been wrapped up in whatever local politics is going on here where I sold a job to Clayton Heaves, just a local resident back in June. It was just a little fifteen panel solar install, gonna go on his roof, really not visible. And I guess I've gotten swooped into all this local talk about that people thought they were signing up to, you know, ban wind farms, but it roped me in with all that nonsense as well. And I know there's a lot more going on here than I think even I know. So that's why I'm kinda here, just to put eyeballs on anyone that wants to talk to me afterwards or anything I can help offer or contribute or find out if there's like, I know that I've been talking with David Kelsey for a long time trying to figure out what's going on and what he could get to happen, that he could then approve our zoning to then move forward. And, you know, after many delays over many months, it just seems like, okay, let's just see who I can talk to.
Do you do residential solar or do you do residential and industrial?
I don't, yeah, I don't have anything to do with industrial. Yeah, definitely just residential and commercial though.
Yeah, we'll be talking about it.
Okay.
Old business, so we'll answer your questions.
Okay.
If not.
Exactly. I don't exactly know what comment I should be making, other than I'm really interested to try to help Miss move forward where I don't get roped in with the giant industrial conversation anymore.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Anybody else?
I piggyback a little bit there, just because I'm sure it can become a discussion, the difference between residential and industrial, but then the difference between residential, commercial and industrial. Some ordinances have it three different ways and some have it two. But while he was here, I don't know if he can answer any of that.
The proposed ordinance that we had, it did label, I think it meant by kilowatt, the difference between large and small. Of course, residential is just furnishing power for your own, where commercial obviously is.
But there's a difference between commercial and industrial. That's where, while he's here, it'd be nice to touch on that difference between residential, commercial and industrial.
Yeah, we'll be. Yeah. Anybody else?
Jessica Quakel. To whom it may concern, Apex Plan Energy has expressed an interest to develop a new wind farm in our area of Montcalm County and has approached our land group, or our land owner group, to discuss a potential for signing easements. We have convened a leadership steering committee representing approximately fifteen thousand acres of land in the Montcalm Wind Project footprint. We are exclusively negotiating in good faith with Apex for long-term wind easements with Apex Clean Energy and hope to conclude those negotiations and execute easements by the end of this year based on our acknowledgement of the community and conversations we've had with our neighbors. We believe that there will be a high degree of participation in the area once the final terms with Apex are set. So it's back in November fourth, two thousand and eighteen, and the first signature is Chris Rader. Do you still hold that position? Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. Julian, really glad to see you on the board. Great to see you out there.
Anybody else?
Yep. Ken Bloom, the new clerk. I do not have a signed and completed solar ordinance that was enacted back in June of last year. If any of you have that copy with the front page filled out and the back page filled out, I would appreciate to have a copy of that in my records. Colleen Stebbins did not give me one of those.
So you're talking the proposed ordinance that was referendum?
The proposed ordinance back in June of last year with the front page completed and the back pages and signed off. It was voted on on June fourth of two thousand and twenty-one. I have not been able to find a copy of that. So if any of you guys, any of you have, anyone here has a copy of that with it completed, I need it for my records.
Yeah, this says December ninth is what I have.
What I got.
Yeah.
I don't know if we have. It was on June fourth that it was voted on at the board.
You guys remember?
Solar was actually.
And then.
The solar.
You guys, then the board decided to change it. I live one month.
There may have been some changes after that, but I don't even have the original.
There was a new one in December after the first referendum, they decided to.
Oh, the original?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think we have.
So then they had to do another one.
Yeah.
But we don't think we have.
Not operating.
The county clerk was trying to locate it. I've been trying to locate it and I cannot find it.
I wonder if the county plan.
The building department don't have it. They wanted it. Cannot be located. Okay, thank you.
Although, the question is, since it was referendum and failed, I mean, how do you need it? Is it non-avoided or?
I still, even though, even though it's been recorded and voted down, I still need it in the records that it existed. Online, there's a copy of it. It's not filled out. It's not a legal copy.
Yeah.
So until it's filled out in front, it's a love of the buyer. Signature is, it's not a legal copy. Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else? All right, thank you. We'll close both comments. Dave, you got a zoning administrator report?
I have the, or August and September. I have the October, my file cabinet, when I walked out the door, I forgot to grab it. I just ran copies. For the month of August, there were, okay, one five five three zero Gates Road. A home and attached garage with a briefway. And eighty-seven fifty-two metal trail home addition and attached garage. And seventeen zero one zero black foot trail. There was a complaint that somebody was living in their camper and they claim they're not, so I'm gonna go back to whoever called in about it and see if they would be able to testify if they will. I can get a court date going for it, but I can't show up and work without it. Otherwise, I said it's just hearsay because I didn't see it. Okay, one one two zero one North Masters, a home. Eighty-eight sixty Swan trail, a covered porch. And a building garage turned down, we used it. That was the month of August, September. One, one five three zero Ambo Road, a forty by sixty pole barn that's for farm use. Eighty-nine twelve West Swanee. There's a lot line adjustment. Eighty-nine twelve, twelve and twenty, Swan trail lot line adjustment. Both of them were one on each side of a vacant lot. Two different parties purchased half the lot and it there's larger, so they have to have it done at the same time if you can. Anyway, one four one three nine, need to drive or meant to drive. Remove a home and tear it down or whatever. Now, one four three six zero Deener, a garage. And I don't have the address. There's a property ID number. I don't have it written down there. And they're putting a home up there, which is Thomas Crater. That's it.
Any questions for Dave? We're probably asking you questions once you get into some solar. Any other questions for Dave? All right, Julia, come to work.
All right, so we did a vote on, at the November fourteen meeting, so I'm gonna quickly go through everything. Everything that I, as I mentioned, basically was voted on and approved. So just so you know.
You have a copy of that?
Um, no, I don't have an actual, but I can get you one. So first, Ryan, Ken and I were all sworn in. We pretty quickly got to new business, so we had a motion to update bank signature cards to add Ken and Dennis, the clerk and the deputy clerk, and to have a, basically a credit card that it used for township business because previously they were using, like, I think their own personal cards and then, you know, having to do waivers. So we won't be doing that. We had a motion to get quotes for some QuickBooks, possible for real training for Ken, Kathy and Dennis. Or a quest to get quotes for a copier and scanner, laptop, possible e-backups is meaning like online backups and security. So we're working on all that. We made a motion to approve training for Ryan, Ken and myself, and I believe Dennis, to go to training on December sixteenth in Lansing. It's like new officials training. We made a motion that passed to publish public notices from now on in the daily news. We passed a motion to change all board meetings to a second Thursday of the month at seven PM. No more ten thirty day meetings. A motion to pay the bills. We passed a motion to install a six-month moratorium on residential and industrial wind while we work on it at PC level and on industrial and residential solar. We passed a motion to have an official Facebook page. It's Winfield Township. Conlon, Michigan, M.I. Just so everyone knows, that's the official page for social media. Winfield Township, Conlon, M.I. And that's run by the supervisor. We passed a motion to get a P.O. box, which is temporarily until we figure out what else we might wanna do with, with, because we're not having Dale going to your house, our house, anyone's house anymore. Should come here or someplace more official, and that is P.O. box number one zero nine. We passed a motion to approve basically to finance placing the locks on the doors, which have been done, both the front and the back door. And board, all board members have a key. We passed a motion to look into quotes for updating the website or possibly getting a completely new website, which I'm working on. We will not be doing rentals any longer until further notice. Which we discussed, I'm not sure if we had a motion on that or not, but we discussed it. I don't know if Ryan has any more on that, but if you do, you're good. And then we talked about looking for volunteers for a hall clean-up date, which we're gonna determine later. I think probably in January we'll do that. We made a motion to approve me to be on the planning commission. We approved to stick with Heckman for snow piling. We discussed the new one that was on the window, which has been done, and on the website, which has been done. Along with the updated meeting times. We discussed recording meetings, which are also recorded. I think the planning commission and board meetings will all be recorded and uploaded to either the Facebook site or the website or YouTube or some combination of that. And then we did pass a zero tolerance conflict of interest policy as a board, which we're looking to implement across all the boards, and I have a copy for everyone, so.
Can we get a fourth laptop? So I'll give my personal one.
Yeah. You shouldn't have to use a personal laptop.
We could pass on to other, you know, secretary that can never, doesn't do it anymore.
Like an email? Oh, the laptop. I mean, that's another thing. Oh, I forgot to mention that, by the way. So we, we did also all get emails that are like supervisor@winfilddownship.org, clerk@winfilddownship.org, treasurer@winfilddownship.org, and then trustee one@winfilddownship, from number one and trustee two. I'm number one, Steve is number two, so we don't have to use personal emails either. And we look at any of them. Got an email, so you don't have to use a personal email.
Yeah, if I can have a copy of it, I can carry it.
Sure.
Sounds like you had a busy meeting.
It's a productive one.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, a question of township board, why is the township hall not gonna be used? For people, residents of the township, why?
There's a couple things that we talked about. Number one is now that the records are all being kept here about people's homes, we're trying to make sure that those are like secured. And that's difficult to do when people are coming in into the hall. Because we don't have, we don't have like a specific storage space. And there's halls that people have built with literally like fire, I don't know, fireproof. How do you say it? Like vaults that they keep record, paper records. We don't have anything like that, so we don't really have a safe space to keep them that aren't accessible to people coming in, so. It was a discussion at the board. If you have further questions, I think probably the best person I've had would be Ryan, but that, as far as I understand, at this point, we will not be renting the hall out until further notice.
Include the Winfield four H group that's been here for half a life for fifty years, probably?
As far as I know. Honestly, do you wanna speak to this, Ryan?
It's something that I'm working on. I've gotta meet the four H or speak with them. Set up a time for that, but the setup, joint setup is a place of business. But that is an option you can have down here.
I mean, we're gonna build a hall that is more conducive potentially to being able to rent it out and have things secured, but we don't have that here.
Just keep in mind it's a community to go into, okay? So we'll, if we have to bend a little bit or make concessions, then just keep that in mind too, so.
What about the parks? Is it gonna be off the wall too?
I don't know what you're talking about.
Well, if the township hall can't be used by the community, how about the park? Is that gonna be able to be used there?
You didn't discuss that.
Yeah. Yeah, they do. No, it's part of the community, so it's that.
It'll probably be an entrance fee?
You're only a part of the community.
Considering the last person Phyllis rented it to
Is that why you're not talking to people?
disobeyed the rules?
She don't mean it, though.
You're dead. I'm sorry, what?
I say if she hollers at me, I mean, she's not part of the township, I know that.
That's why you're not talking to people.
Part of the county.
All right, let's get back on track.
Ryan, you have a comment or?
No, no. So when you say rental is very big, so we just have to understand what you mean by rental.
So.
That was a very big statement.
Just that my understanding is that further notice, we will not be renting out the hall.
Renting out township hall?
Yes. I said the hall, we don't be renting out the hall. Okay, did I update that? Did I just say right?
Yes.
So I wrote down. That's all, yeah.
All right, as far as old business at our last meeting, we talked quite a bit about the solar. Obviously, the solar ordinance failed. Now, there was discussion, obviously, there's an interest in putting solar on rooftops. I know Dave was holding off on granting permits, but since that meeting in August, I know you've had a legal opinion. Where Bloom and Sluggit basically said, even though we don't have a solar ordinance on file, according to our book, they could put residential rooftop on going by accessory building or use.
There's a little bit more that I was reading from you with the attorney collection. Well, again, and I gave you a copy, and a couple other people. It says prior amendment likely still in effect, and later the zoning amendment, which never became effective due to the referendum, vote last August of very similar. Accordingly, if the township board desires to act consistent with the voters, referendum decision from last August, the township board could now expressly repeal the prior amendment. Okay, should that occur, the township board may decide to include an express ban on solar farms, but still provide regulations and standards for allowing building mount solar panels and small solar panels that serve the same item which they are located. You know, another paragraph there doesn't say much, but anyway, I feel I'm at a standstill till the board repeals the prior amendment, if it should be done. I, Ryan is checking into, getting legal advice to make sure it's done right. You know, what can be done, can't be done, because I don't know on this, you know. The way I'm reading this, it, there has to be a, it's up to the board, planning commission or the regular board to act consistent with the voters and repeal the prior amendment. And then possibly include an express ban on solar farms, you know, so. You know, you have that same letter I gave you. That's the last page on there. And anyway, I'm at the point where I'm waiting for guidance from the, either planning commission or the regular board to find out what we can legally do or can't.
Well, or we can just, you know, do a small residential ordinance.
Yeah, so I mean, I think, we talked about this last year when I was on the board meeting, which I think Dale, I think that you suggested that we separate small and large solar, and it didn't pass, but I think that's a great idea. I mean, why not let people put it on their homes? And I think, I mean, I need a copy of the official copy before I'm gonna vote on anything, like I'm not gonna vote on anything today, but I don't think our residential solar is horrible. I mean, it's pretty basic. You know, there's not much in there that I think people are gonna have a problem with. I believe that the ordinance fails because of the industrial solar. So I think we could make a motion to separate it, too. Again, I'm not comfortable voting on anything until I have an official copy. It's not official from what time it's at, but that's where I suggest that we go.
Of course, right now we have a moratorium, six months.
Right, so the moratorium basically can be, that can be amended. It's basically a moratorium in place while we work on it. So once we decide that we have something that we are good with, that can expire. It's not like, not gonna be done in the first six months. The board has the power to take that off once the planning commission sent this, or you know, that's worked with.
I don't understand why solar panels on residence are just part of electrical system that isn't just part of the building, but why does it even have to be involved in the whole solar ordinance business?
I mean, that's somewhere about like layer.
I think, are you assuming it's always on the roof?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, there may not, they may not be on the roof.
Yeah, and our ordinance does talk about it.
But that's why I said, I don't understand why if somebody's gonna, they're building a house, put it on the roof, why isn't that just part of the building permit?
It's not like putting a TV antenna on your roof or.
And it does address things like layer. It does address, well, I don't know for sure how it does, again, we have to see a copy, but good ordinance does address things like layer, because that, even if it's on your roof, if it's across the lake or across the, I don't know, wherever, it's, there's, there are guidelines in there, so that it's not a nuisance to neighbors, but there should be guidelines for those things.
I think. Get the middle if I can, you know.
I talked to NTA about this before, you know, a while back, and basically, they ended up saying, contact your lawyer. I don't have a lawyer to do that. That's why I took the Ryan, but anyway, they said, if, to my understanding, if the township never did, said this is the beginning, they never tried to enact an ordinance for solar, then people could do it, use it as an accessory structure, like you said, Ken, on the roof, or you can have it as an accessory structure in your yard. But because it was worked on and it's not, now it's classified as something different than an accessory structure. That's to the understanding. Anybody can call NTA on the board and talk to them about it and they'll glad, they'll give you a lot of information, but that's what I took from what they said. That's why you can't do it now without, you know, like you said, Ken, you know, as an accessory structure or part of the main structure.
Don't separate it from the building. Part of the building. And this business about, you know, gee, it's something different. That's like saying you're gonna, you know, tell somebody they can't put a shiny roof on the roof. You know, shiny new metal roof because it's gonna break somebody. Well, we don't do that. Solar panels absorb light. They don't reflect it. I don't get it. This shouldn't even be that thing. Let people put panels on. Let it be part of the building.
I think the old sun needs to reflect a lot, like, yeah, that's, that's like that's the only one that'll reflect here in the back.
Well, in our, in our solar ordinance, I don't know if we can just cut out, we might have to kinda start over, whether we can just cut out, just kinda integrate it between both of them. I don't know where they can go for both of them.
It'll have to be rewritten. The way it's written, it's definitions and stuff there. So I think we have the right information there. We'll have to have the attorney rewrite it with definitions. So.
Yeah, they haven't got me separated.
Can I make a motion that we have the attorney look at the ordinance and charge the government separating small or residential from industrial solar?
I think that's the way we're gonna go about it.
I'll make a motion, yeah, have the attorney separate our small or industrial from industrial. And then we'll take a look at it in January.
Which attorney?
Yeah.
Which attorney? Who are you referring to? Which attorney?
Well, the current municipal attorney they have is Bloom and Sluggit, so one of them. But that's good to clarify. Might have to be, oh, yeah.
So we're talking about a process for this that's gonna go through rewriting it. It's gonna have to get approved. It's gonna have to be posted and everything else for the township to get approved. Then, to me, it would make sense at the same time to do some cleaning up in the ordinance book, especially for things like the additional structures that are, you know, found auxiliary buildings and stuff like that. In our ordinance court, it's pretty unclear. And if that were clear, it would handle the situation already anyway. And I don't understand why a panel on the roof would be considered a, you know, a whole auxiliary structure. It doesn't make sense.
I guess before we get that far, we had a motion from Julia, who seconded it, Jake seconded it, to have Bloom and Sluggit review our solar ordinance and try to
Separate.
Separate it for a small residential use. But all those in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Anything else on the solar or?
Well, it's, how much more work is there to do to get a solar, uh, the rest of it done, I mean, you know, it seemed like the biggest deal was about percentage of farmland, I mean, I mean, and what's the difference between commercial and industrial? Solar.
Yeah, could this gentleman help us answer that? I, I, I just question I was gonna ask, Ken.
Since I don't deal with industrial too much, I don't, I don't know if my feedback's great, my, my idea of commercial is just, uh, usually, and, like, literally just a commercial setting that they can use the electricity they're generating to offset what their current usage at that facility is. Like, that's what my idea of commercial, like, where industrial, I think, crosses that line, where you're gonna, they're gonna sell, where everything they're producing, they're selling directly back to the grid and they're getting that, like, three cents per kilowatt hour or some, some sort, it's like a fitness. Uh, basically, but on scale, it makes sense, it still is cost-effective and can make people money. But most anything I'm dealing with, when I talk about commercial, I'm just talking about, yeah, I've, I've installed commercial that's smaller than my residential installs, so I'm just talking about, uh, yeah, commercial entities, really installing solar is where I see that line.
Like we've talked about before with a dairy farm wanting solar panels on their farm to offset some electrical.
Yep, and that's probably off.
That's commercial, not industrial?
Yeah, I'd see that as commercial, that's just offsetting his, their existing use.
A, 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 a solar farm.
Yeah, that, like, I think industri-, I think the line in the sin I tried to draw there was, I think, solar farms, or like wind farms even, would be purposely building the, uh, solar or electrical generation devices just to sell it straight to the grid and not even offset anything going on, on site. That's, uh, we're, usually, solar is offsetting, like, and what I was describing as commercial, they're offsetting the use that they had annually. Like, the dairy farm would use the electricity to offset their milk, you know, their machines and their, and anything they're running industrial, like, as part of their business.
How, how large would a commercial unit be?
Uh, commercial, uh, to be a reas-, I think a reasonable standard might be based in what consumers' energy already has as their tiers. Uh, residential usually falls under tier one, up to twenty kilowatts, which, think about it, is roughly eighty panels on the large side, uh, where a commercial entity probably could, can go as large as tier, top, end of tier two, which is around a hundred and fifty kilowatts uh, in size, which would generally be around like, uh, well, how many panels, like, three hundred to four hundred panels, somewhere in there is the large size, size, larger size of commercial. Um, I put, I put a system that large on the top of a few, you know, industrial buildings in the Grand, West Michigan area. Um, those were never done in, about big ground mounts, though, for my, for ones I've been involved with, so. I know ground mounts can become its own structure and its own opinion situation, so, that's just my quick take on, you know, let me know what else I can try to answer. I know to speak to something you were mentioning a second ago, like, a, a maju-, vast majority of my permits I've ever done uh, never involved a zoning permit, uh, like, as needing the zoning permit, that's only for ground mounts usually, that that even comes up, so that's what made this particularly, you know, hairy.
When you pull the permits, it's through either the building department or the electrical department of the?